Good afternoon and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for November the 21st. All council members are present and accounted for. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's formal council meeting upstairs. So council, please take a look at the agenda for tonight. Item three are various liquor license applications. Four are various purchase contracts. Yes, Mr. Richardson.
Could we get a little, could we get a quick briefing on 4D? And as we've always, I mean, it always seems we're...
Can you guys just sneak up something here?
Oh, my microphone not on? Hello? There we go. Just a quick briefing on 4D. We buy a lot of radios and spend a lot of money on radios. And I was a little shocked to see that we have, you know, radios that are 14-years-old. And with all the radios it seems like I bought over the last eight years, I'm shocked that we have radios that old. So perhaps you guys could refresh my memory. Thank you. Sorry, Henry.
Good afternoon. With me today is Commander Bill Peters and Darren Douglas of Communications. The radios are replaced, some radios that are about 14-years-old right now. Both of the...
Car or handheld?
They are both.
It's both.
They're both for the vehicles and the handheld radios. Both of them were involved in the RFP process. So if you have specific questions about it, I'm sure they'll be able to answer it.
So when we get new cars, we bought a lot of new cars, do we put old radios in those new cars? Or do we equip them? So we're just moving equipment over?
That's correct.
So we continue to have that stuff?
These radios are at their end of life. They're about 14-years-old. They're to the point where we really can't replace the radios anymore. We can't even fix them because the parts are not available. So we're getting to the point where we now need new radios.
So you feel like you got your money's worth out of the radios that we've already purchased pretty well? So is it a three-year program to replace all the radios?
The way the contract is written is that we will actually receive all 1,700 radios within the first year, more than likely in the January, February timeframe. But it'll be three years of payments for those radios.
Oh, okay. Under a lease purchase?
Yes.
And by receiving it by December, we have a $400,000 discount and then 0% interest off those three-year payments.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Other questions, council? Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions on item four, again, various purchase contracts? Five is a couple of resolutions. Six is receiving public comment and taking action on various ordinances. Yes?
Mayor and council, on item 5C, the canvas of the election.
Yes.
We haven't received some of the final reports from the county, and so we'll need to have that for a continuance for a special council meeting on December 1st. And so it can stay on the consent agenda, and Mr. Christopher will weed it in as a continuance, like I just said, for that date.
Okay.
That's all right, council?
Sounds good. So he'll just adjust the wording to say that this item 5C has been continued to the next ma-- okay, next council meeting. Thank you. All right. And then item seven is just a proven subdivision plan. So it doesn't look like anything's coming off the consent agenda. Is that fair to say? Okay. Then the next item on our agenda for this meeting is item two, which is to hear a presentation on the community and developer outreach efforts and provide direction on the future development of the approximately 25 acres of city-owned land located at the southwest corner of University and Mesa Drive. I know there's been a lot of outreach, both with the community and with the development community. So Jeff McVeigh, you've done a great job of steering this project. We're looking forward to hearing the results.
Good evening, mayor, council. This is a big, this was a big effort, so I've brought a team to help me get through it. What we want to, if you want to get the... What we want to do tonight is to quickly run you through the, essentially, the results of all our outreach efforts, what we've done, the feedback we've heard, and then have some discussion and direction on what you would like to see as we solicit the property, as we put together an RFP or an RFQ, what kind of vision you'd like us to put in as we take that out to the development community. We start out, go ahead in the next slide. We wanted to get as much input from the community as possible. When we came and talked about some of the development concepts, just to get discussion going, it was clear the council wanted to hear what the community, what the community thought about what should happen at Mason University Drive, but also, in addition to that, what the development community actually wanted, would believe is a potential marketable project as well. So we went through several different avenues to gain that, that feedback. The first, and where we got most of our responses, we created an online survey that we hosted, and we also put that survey into a kiosk. We created three kiosks with iPads that we preloaded so that we could have them in various locations throughout the city. We had one in the lobby of the City Plaza Building. We had one over at the main library. And then we also had one that spent some time at Jared's Coffee Shop in downtown. So we could get as much feedback, you know, if you don't have a computer, you could come into the city, you can still fill one out. Go ahead to the next one. We got, we got a lot of responses. And for those people, as part of the survey, they were able to give us where they, generally where they lived if they wanted to. So for the most part, you see that it's residents of Mesa and a lot of residents from nearby, the, that 25 acres at Mason University Drive. In addition to the surveys, we held two community meetings, and they were very well-attended. I think, you know, some of the attendees are in the audience today to hear the results themselves, because I think they're interested as well. And I'm going to hand over to Lucy Lopez, who, she's from our Energy Resources Department, but she was on rotation in the city manager's office, and this was one of the projects that she got assigned. And when you go on that rotation, the projects kind of follow you where you go. And so Lucy was very instrumental in getting these meetings put together. So I'm going to let her describe what we did with those.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Lucy Lopez, and I was very fortunate to be able to help out with this important project for the city. I'd like to take you through the process of the community meetings. So we facilitated two community meetings.
Go to the next slide.
We started out by having a registration desk where we collected information from the participants' email address and phone numbers so that we could get back with them with the results. Then what we did is Jeff McVeigh went through a, an introduction and kind of talked about what the purpose of the survey was online in these community meetings. And then we did a 100, one-word goal exercise where we asked people to just yell out words that meant something to them about what they wanted to see at this development. So, you know, we had things like trees and friendly and refreshing, and so those types of words came out. We didn't, we just said, what do you, what does this success mean to you at this development?
As our warm-up exercise, just to get people's minds really starting to think about it.
And then, you know, as the minutes progressed, they got more and more creative, and we heard a lot of neat words of what their visions are. Then the next, we played a board game. So when they walked in, they were handed a board game. And it had five categories. What the participants did is they went to each different table. There were five different categories, and there were 10 pictures and, or excuse me, nine pictures, and one was a none-of-the-above option. So as they went through the tables, they could select their top three favorite pictures for each category. And so when they were done, this is what it looked like. And then what we did with this is we took a photograph of each one of these boards, and they actually became a part of the survey. We inserted it back into the tool, and it counted in as part of the survey. And then our third exercise was, we asked three open-ended questions, and they had a piece of paper and to answer each one of those questions. And this is what it looked like. So the three questions that we asked is, what does a successful development at University and Mesa Drive feel like? What does a failure look like? And what are the three most important elements that you would like to see at this development?
The important part about those three open-ended questions were, it ended up being qualitative responses that we didn't get with the online survey. So we were able to use those qualitative responses as a way to validate the actual survey responses. So we can start to get some of the flavor behind why people may have chose one residential type over another.
So within these two meetings, we ended up having a total of 175 people participate in the meetings. And this heat map here illustrates where people were located. So as you can see, the majority of the people that came, the star in the middle represents the site, and all of the blue dots indicate where people were from that participated in, at these meetings. So there's a great interest in the immediately surrounding neighborhoods, although we did have some business people and also some residents that were kind of out in Mesa and some other parts.
Go ahead to the next slide. We were hopeful. I wanted to be able to come in and say, we had more than 2,000 responses, but we had 1,873 responses to the survey, including the community meetings, the kiosks, and the online survey altogether. The important thing to note is that this is a survey. It's not a statistically validated effort. We didn't do random sampling. We can only say that this is statistically valid for the 1,873 people that responded to it. We can't say that this represents the entire city, but we had a lot of responses. And Jeff, Jeff Robbins, who you've met before, he's going to run us through quickly the actual responses to the different categories and how, we've got to show it to you in a couple of different ways that really help visualize what the community's response was.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. So before we dive into the data, I want to explain what we're looking at here. This is called a tree map. It's a great way of visualizing data, but if you haven't seen it before, you might need a minute just to understand what we're looking at. Well, basically, what it is, is it's broken up into rectangles, and each rectangle represents an option that our survey respondents could have selected. And the size of the rectangle directly corresponds to how many people voted for that option. If you looked into the bottom-right corner, that's the options that had the fewest number of votes. And the top-left corner, those are the rectangles or the options that had the highest number of votes. So we wanted to talk about some of the major points and some of the patterns that we saw in the data. The first thing that you may notice looking at this, if you look at the left half of the map, the options, three of the four of them anyway, they correspond to ownership. Single families usually assumed to be owner-occupied. And condos, even though it is a higher-intensity development, is also generally understood to be owner-occupied. And as Jeff said, we were very conscientious about going in and looking at our qualitative data to make sure that we could try to suss out what people were doing and understand better why they were, why the quantitative data looked the way it did. And what we found was that there were many responses. It was a very large group who said very specifically that they wanted owner-occupied, very high-quality development, and who wouldn't want a high-quality development near their, near their homes? And again, if you look at the right side of our map, it's apartments, student housing, generally things that are understood not to be owner-occupied. The second thing that we wanted to point out here, and this is very interesting, we thought, was that by a margin of .06%, other was the second-highest vote-getting category. So that could mean two things. One, they didn't like anything we gave them. And that is possible. We, I, one of the qualitative responses we had back said, hey, I wanted a one-story single-family, you didn't put that there. And of course, this is a visual survey. So people looking at this may be thinking, well, this is exactly what I'm getting. And we were trying, especially when we were in the public meetings, to say, no, it's, this isn't the exact style you're getting. It's more representative of the type of development that could go in here. And the other option, the other thing that, anyway, we got so many others, is because they don't want residential here at all. And this did play out very strongly in our qualitative data. People said, I want a swimming pool, I want a park, I want something unique that is, when people think about Mesa, they think of a monument or something. And so there were other ideas, and so that may be another reason why the other category for this particular residential use is so high. So this is our next slide, and it's the exact same data in a different way of looking at it. This is a stacked bar chart. And I don't know if we mentioned, but we gave everybody three votes. So there's 10 categories, three votes, and they can put those three votes wherever they like. And this particular stacked bar chart is organized by the number of first votes. So the blue, that, or turquoise color, whatever you want to call it, that is how the graph sways. So what is very interesting, you'll notice here, if you look at this detached single-family, that's our bar in the very farthest right, it's almost double the next, which is the attached single-family for the first votes. And why this is significant is because people came in and said, oh, I know exactly what I want, I want this. And so they put their first on detached. And another interesting pattern here, if you look at the attached single-family, look at the red, or kind of the orange's color, it's the one with 397 votes, that's in their very large block. And then if you go down four bars to the all-other category, the gray bar on that particular stacked bar is very large. And so what we think people were doing, and again, from the qualitative, it kind of told us this story, is that people were coming in and saying, well, I want detached single-family, and if I can't get that, I guess I'll take attached single-family, and if I can't get that, I don't want anything else. And they, then they put their vote on all-other. And there were many people who came in and said, I just want the neighborhood to look like it looked before. Again, not everybody thought that. Some people said they want something very different, but there definitely was a strong contingent of responses that felt that way. So moving on to our next category, now we know how the charts look, I don't need to explain those again. This is our non-residential-use categories, or I think, commercial, right? And this was very fascinating to us, that our restaurant response was so high, both in the quantitative and the qualitative. Going through, it really was astounding how many people, when we gave them an open response to anything on the survey, they made sure to mention that they wanted restaurants. And it's funny, they wanted hip restaurants, is usually how they described them. Also very interesting is, the next highest is a pedestrian mall. And you'll see this theme as we go through the other categories. People want a walkable, we call it a programmable space, that can be transformed into many different uses. And we'll see that, and we'll make note of that as we go on. Now, one thing about the restaurants, and that we found very interesting, Jeff and I, and we talked to the developers about this, was, is this the right site for restaurants? And is this what the people are saying, is that at University Mesa, I want a restaurant? And we were very thorough in going through the qualitative data to actually find out if that was the intent. And what we discovered is that it's not necessarily this site, but people are hungry for great restaurant options in our downtown. I want to read one of the responses we got.
Did he realize that pun just made up?
Yeah. They're hungry for restaurants.
Oh, man, I'm so good. Yeah, you don't know what I get when I get up here. Okay, so here's the, here's the quote we get. It says, "I want new, modern, hip restaurants, retail, and maybe some mixed-retail housing can revitalize the area. We need something to keep us spending money here instead of going to downtown Gilbert or Sandton." I think that's also something we can agree on, right? Let's shop Mesa. So people think the same thing, and they don't want to keep traveling. They want to be able to go to downtown and stay out at night and, you know, get some drinks and have a nice food experience. But maybe it's, and again, the qualitative was not necessarily here, but we definitely want some downtown.
I think the way, there are, there are a few people in our second community meeting that were very vocal, that said that they want this property to become a revenue generator for the city. So I think in their mind, they're thinking, there was a few people that said, you know, let's not have any residential all, let's just put in there, you know, offices, retail, restaurants that can create revenue. But I think for the vast majority of the people, is that they still look at this as a neighborhood, especially when you look at the counts of votes for the residential categories where they were. They look at this as a neighborhood that's connected to a, a strong downtown core that has that retail and restaurant district available to them. I think, I think mostly it's about connections, because I think if you ask most, most people that responded to the survey whether they want to convert this 25 acres into a retail and restaurant district, I don't know that that's where they would actually want to see it.
And I would agree with that. I don't know if the qualitative data would say that either. A lot of them, they like the housing option. They would sway that way. So here's our stacked bar chart. Again, interesting, looking at restaurants, how many people came in and right away their first goat goes towards restaurants, and then everything else is, you know, kind of, kind of even. But it is interesting, there is a clear break between pedestrian mall, mixed-rise use, and restaurants, and then everything else is kind of on its own, own tier. So next category, this is our public amenities category. And boy, again, this, this survey continued to surprise us with the farmer's market receiving the highest number of votes, with 18.3% of the total votes cast. And so again, when we see something like this that surprises us, we want to go into the qualitative and make sure we understand what's going on. And people were very clear about what they, what they were thinking here. I'll read one of the responses that we received that I thought was pretty representative of the others we received. It says, "If you, if you make it residential, you need closer mainsline grocery stores. It will not work well without them. Too far to nearest fries, Albertson's or Safeway, Bosch's at Mesa Drive and Brown is not enough." So that's one thing they may be saying is, I want food closer by, and this is the closest option, so that's what I want. And then again, the other is that programmable space, whether it's a farmer's market today, tomorrow, it's for a different activity, it's something where we can coordinate community And then, oh, and then the other thing I wanted to point out on this particular slide is, is the importance of greenery. The other two main big vote-getters here, pocket parks and passive open space. Many, many people responded to this and said, quote, cozy with lots of green space. They like the idea of taking that lot, which is not green, not cozy at the moment, and really kind of flipping that on its head. And not much to see or comment on this one. This is definitely a much more normal distribution, kind of what we'd expect, slowly going upwards. So not a, not a significant feeling one way or the other, but again, farmer's market scores very high, pocket parks score very high. But I know you're all wondering, what was the top vote-getter of all, the number one out of all of our categories that people want? And without any further ado, shade trees. And it wasn't even close. It wasn't even close. The qualitative and the quantitative were overwhelmingly shade trees. It really was very interesting to us. Again, in Parkway, scores very high, and you have a picture of trees. And I also thought this was a very, almost humorous, unique pavement treatments, if you look in the bottom-right corner, it's almost like they're repudiating pavement. They say, we want trees and anything with pavement, we're tired of. And so it got the, actually, unique pavement treatments was the lowest percentage of any category we did, in all, in all categories. To really punctuate that, there you go. People came in and 800, there was 864 first votes cast for shade trees, which is more than the next category having the first and second and third votes combined. We told you, what was it, 1,800-something total votes? And we had 1,522 for shade trees? So out of, you know, if you have five people who are voting, four of them voted for shade trees.
This proves something that I've always known, is that almost every resident, every citizen of Mesa or any city is a planner, and they just don't, they just don't, they're, they're an urban designer, and they just don't know it. They know what, what makes up the public realm of a, of a good development. And they've shown it, that street trees and public open space and programmable space, that's what really makes sure that a development's going to be successful long-term. It's what the public amenities are.
So going on to our very last, oh, going on to our very last category here, this is the transition to the Wilbur Historic District. And we had a lot of concurrence on this from developers, and Jeff's going to talk more about that in a minute. But what we felt, what the community felt, what the developers felt, it's all, it all goes together, and that is, is that either we need an open space or a pathway buffer between whatever is in the new development in Wilbur, or having something that looks very similar as a buffer. People gravitated towards the single-family detached, and you'll notice on this, we actually gave them different styles. This is, this is unique in this one, that we gave them a single-family detached number one, a single detached two, and then attached one and attached two, because we really wanted to give them different, different ideas of what the style could look like. And it's interesting, the detached, they both scored quite well, and the attached, not, not as well. They were our lower vote-getters. And one other thing to note here, if you look in the bottom-right-hand corner for small-scale apartments, small-scale apartments, we did something kind of as a test. We stuck the small-scale apartments in two categories. We put it in the Wilbur Historic District, and we put it into the residential section. So it was, it was the only one that we had two in the, or two, the same option in two different categories. And in both categories, it was the lowest vote-getter. So what that tells us is that even if you ask it a different way, people know that they don't really want small-scale apartments in this location. And Jeff will tell us in a moment there that maybe the developers don't necessarily agree with that, but the community felt pretty resoundingly that that was the case. And our bar graph.
Go ahead to the next one. So from those 1,873 responses, it was actually pretty easy to summarize what we think the community's vision is. They want a, they want a primarily residential development on the 25 acres, highly focused on owner-occupied market-rate development, that the transition between the Wilbur Historic District to the south needs to be low-scale and have it, and create a step up into higher intensity uses further north, that the people that will live here in the future and the neighborhoods that are around it have access to a, a very nice public realm, tree-lined streets that make it so it's a walkable place. And they also want to have that really nice connection, whether it's by foot, by bike, or by car, to the downtown core where there's going to be a retail and restaurant district that's available to them. I mean, that was a, I hope, hopefully, there's residents back there nodding their heads that that's what they agree with too, but that's, was very simple based on the numbers to come up with. The, the question now is, does the development community agree with that? We can go to the next. So we convened what we're, we called the Developers Forum. We actually sent out invites to specific developers. We held it, it was just about two weeks ago. We had representatives from Sunbelt, DMB, Harvard Investment, Meritage Homes, Art House, and a couple other smaller developers that, that participated. And essentially, what we did was, we went through the presentation we just gave you on the community's responses with them, and we asked them to respond and say, does this seem like something that you would be interested in doing? Also, is this something that you think the market could absorb? And is there anything that you would think, that you would do differently? So we can go on to the, so I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly, each category. So we went through the five categories for the community, we'll go through the same five categories. So if the community saw for residential, you know, aesthetically pleasing residential development that's primarily single-family and condos, the developers, for the most part, they agreed with that. They thought that was something that, that would work in the market. The one area of difference, though, is that they believe that there is a market for some rental product here. They may not necessarily agree with that small-scale apartment either, and I think when people think small-scale apartment, they hear fourplex and eightplex. They think of the 70s and 80s of what is out there today versus, you know, something highly designed that, that's a little different than that. But the developers necessarily, they don't necessarily see that as a, a good option either. They, you know, they'd like, they'd like to build something a little bit bigger, you know, economies of scale. Non-residential. So again, residents want to have access to a good mixed-use core like our downtown with restaurants and retail. They could, they could support some neighborhood-serving retail, maybe a coffee shop on the corner or something like that. Developers, for the most part, they agree with having it well-connected to the downtown core, but they don't see this as a mixed-use neighborhood. They don't necessarily see this as a, a high-intensity mixed-use place. They could, there were one or two voices that said that they could see potentially some office making a buffer from the University Drive going south, but they don't necessarily see this a really integrated mixed-use neighborhood. There would be some opportunity for maybe some live-work units, but that, again, is very low-intensity commercial activity that, that really kind of fits in with that neighborhood For the public amenities, we just got head nods. They, they agreed with the, with the neighborhood. The key is, how would they design it? If they agree with what the neighborhood says, will they, would a design, a concept they come up with bear out the same kind of response that the neighbors have? They, they agree, tree-lined streets. They agree that you have to have connected open space. The Parkway was one that actually got quite a bit of positive response from the developers as creating a buffer. And I just skipped ahead a slide or two, but let's go to the next one then. So the streets, again, developers and, and the community, they agree. We need to have a tree-lined street that's, that's comfortable for people to live on and will help maintain values. And then the transition from the Wilbur Historic District, this is where I think there, the developers could see potentially maybe a little bit more intensity. The neighbor, the neighborhood and the community, they really see this being single-family detached, and to some degree, single-family detached that matches the type of houses that are in the Wilbur District, where developers, they, I think they agree low-intensity residential, but they may be more open to something maybe a little more intense, townhomes or, or really dense... dense single-family lots. But they do see that that creates a nice buffer, and that they believe that buffer's necessary before you transition into higher intensity uses going to the north. So with that, we have, we have an easy vision to respond to from the community. We have some response from the developers. Now, we'd like to have the discussion with council and get some direction from council as to what you would like us to move forward with. We would be happy to draft up an RFQ, an RFP, whichever route we go, that articulates a vision so that we can market this property to developers. But we would like to really kind of have that discussion about what council sees as a vision going forward as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Great presentation. We do also have a couple of members of the public that are here that want to speak on this item as well, so why don't, let's invite them up prior to the council discussion. I have two cards. The first was from DeMontague. Mr. Montague, please come forward. We've allocated three minutes to hear what you have to say. Thanks for being here and participating.
Thank you. My name is DeMontague. I live at 553 North Orange, about a mile away from this area. I want to congratulate Jeff and his team on the public meetings and the outreach. I attended the meetings and participated in the survey. I would encourage the council to follow the desires of the residents and not the developers. It may not be as profitable for developers to go with the lower intensity and the private ownership, but it was overwhelmingly, from those participating in the meetings, it appeared that that's what they desired, and I would encourage that.
Thank you, Mr. Montague. I also have a card from Henry Haas. Mr. Haas, please come forward.
I'm Henry Haas, 1043 East Jensen Street, a couple miles away from this. Back a few months ago, we used to live about half a mile from the site. So we have some interest in it. My thoughts on this is basically what DeMontague said, but I would also caution that on the landscape, don't plant too much. You know, I look at some of the things that have been done by the city, and they're way overplanted. And being in my profession, that I'm very aware of that as I watch it, and selection of materials that will last through our summer, when they're planted during the summer. So there's some things that can do, but the trees and the planting obviously does give it a cooler, more inviting condition and environment. And so I've, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. I think we might be getting another blue card. Is that another request to speak? Okay. Ma'am, please come and have a seat. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were gonna...
You bet. Is it Nancy?
Yeah.
Nancy, please.
Nancy Thompson. I didn't know you were going to do this for this meeting. I didn't know we could talk.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. I live just north of University, across from Site 17, in Washington Escobedo neighborhood.
Yes.
And we moved here about when that, that Site 17 was being, the houses, the homes were being taken down. And I just wanted to say that what the city's been doing in our neighborhood with the Quality of Life Plan is, I really respect the city for doing it, and I would, wanted to ask if there would be something on Site 17 to support the types of things that this plan offers for people, because it helps people keep their homes and be more stable. And it helps the community be stronger, where neighbors can help neighbors in really good ways. And I've been working on this, so I don't know how well-known that is, but the people that I work with at West Mesa Community Development would know what I'm talking about. And I would like, I would like the former residents of Site 17 to be, I guess, like honored and respected for what they didn't get help with in this way. And I understand that this wasn't available back then, this type of thinking maybe, but I would like something there to continue it for all the communities around, the neighborhoods. And that would, I think that would honor and respect communities in general. And you know what I'm saying by that? Okay.
I do, yes.
Okay, that's like really important to me. And I, this, this could do so much, this could change so much in a good way. Okay, thank you.
Nancy, thanks. I know you're doing a lot of good work in Washington Park Escobedo. Appreciate that. Any other requests to speak? Okay, thank you. So the time is available for council to offer some direction to staff. I'll go ahead and kick things off. I have to say, I agree with the consensus of what the public has come back to us with. This was, if you'd asked, well, I participated in the survey, so I hate to skew the results, so I'm one of the people that got polled, but I agree. I would love to see, if you were to ask me, what are the one word, you know, if you, my one, I have two one words. The first would be people. I think downtown needs people, and so I agree with the concept of focusing on residential, bringing more people back to downtown to live here and be invested in the neighborhoods. But the other word would be quality. And it's similar, I have a similar attitude to this development as to what I would like to see at Country Club and Main Street, which is, this has got to be sustainable. Mr. Kavanaugh and I were on the City Council 20 years ago, and what that means is that there are some projects that developers walked in and said, "Boy, this is going to be the best thing ever." And now, 20 years later, I drive by it, and I'm embarrassed that as a council member, I supported that project 20 years ago, because it's not sustainable. It has deteriorated and become part of the problem instead of part of the solution. So I'm not going to make that mistake here, nor at Country Club and Main Street. This has got to raise the bar substantially for the neighborhood and be something that we know 25, 30 years from now, this is going to be a very healthy neighborhood that's going to contribute to downtown. It's a permanent raising of the bar. So I love the idea of having owner-occupied residential there, people that are going to put down roots and that are going to be on the PTO and that are going to care about the neighborhood. I think there is plenty of opportunity for rental properties around there. And frankly, a lot of these, if these are high-density housing, they're going to change hands and eventually just, owner, owners going through some amount of attrition, there will be rental properties available, even if it is single-family attached or detached. So I'm not concerned about the lack of, personally, the lack of rental opportunity, because I think that'll be there. And I know in the Wilbur District and across the street, all over there, there's apartment complexes. And there's, there's not a lack of rental properties, there's a lack of owner-occupied property. And 25 acres isn't all that big. So I think if we try to do all things, you know, on 25 acres, we're going to run out of 25 acres pretty quick. So I, my input is that I concur with the results of this poll, and that I would love to see us, and I'm excited to see that the development community agrees as well. I think it's exciting that the real estate market is at a point right now that we've got a lot of great developers that would love to write a check to the city and buy this property and put in exactly what we tell them to put in there. So this is a very exciting time for us. So I, speaking for myself, I'd love to see us do an RFP that goes with the consensus that we've seen here from the residents, which is residential property, a focus on owner-occupied. I'm not offended at all by the notion of density, because this is a transit-oriented development. This is a block away from light rail, and this is, 25 years from now, people are going to expect a neighborhood with more density than what we're used to now, or looking back on what neighborhoods look like. So I think we're going to get some very exciting responses back from the development community to this RFP, and we're going to have this meeting again a few months from now, where we're going to be selecting from some really impressive responses to the RFP, would be my prediction. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. When I left City Council in 2004, we were talking about putting out an RFP for owner-occupied housing, for TOD development. And for some reason, that got derailed throughout the years, bad pun, but the, then when I came back on council in 2008, we were talking about having an RFP for the property. And then somehow, it got derailed and to thinking, oh, maybe it's going to be a hospital or this or that. And so I really appreciate what the current efforts of staff, that staff has done to get a realistic input and comprehensive input from residents. I agree that the, it's primarily a residential use. I'm not opposed to density, because I've seen TOD developments all around the country that combine the detached homes, attached homes, and some density of units. That's where a lot of people want to live in a neighborhood like that. I think there will need to be some transition from University, which is where you might see the, either commercial, retail, you have something to, I think, protect the residential use from the traffic there. And then, but I also like the transition to the Historic District, so that's my two cents worth. And I'm not planning on coming back on council to see if we're still doing another RFQ or RFP four years from now. I'm hoping to see homes by that time.
I imagine, Vice Mayor, you're going to, you're going to check in on us every once in a while.
I guarantee it. Mr. Luna.
I just want to thank city staff for a wonderful job, but I really want to thank the residents, because that's your neighborhood. You get to dictate what's going to happen there. So I appreciate your input. I'm sure that you're tired of seeing the vacant land. I am. I don't live in this area, but it's going to be nice to have a nice development, some great homes for people to live in, and so I'm really excited about that. So thank you, residents, for your participation, and hopefully, we can move this forward and get some, a nice, a really nice project in that area.
Thank you. Mr. Finter.
My input would be, first, again, appreciation for everybody that's participated. The one word that came to mind when I was listening to some of the desires and wants, including some of the farm, farmers' markets, those kind of things, would be agritopia. So everybody knows, maybe not all know what that is, but amazing development in Gilbert, beautiful homes with big front porches, the opportunity for community gardens, and also small farmer markets, restaurants that are oriented towards a cuisine that's farm-related, you know, wholesome, good. I realize we're limited on the acreage, but for me, I would love to see an Mesa agritopia at that location. Also, the availability of non-potable water, the irrigation system that the city controls, might be some great opportunities there. So hopefully, we can do something along those lines. But very supportive of going with what sounds like the recommendations or what the residents want. So thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Well, looking at the charts, though, the one thing that really stands out to me is that there's a higher vote for non-residential than there was actually for residential. Not that I'm, maybe I'm not, looking to replace what is or is not happening in our downtown area, but it looks like the residents by far are saying that they really want the non-residential, the restaurants, the retail, some of the things like that that would really, you know, work for their community and for their neighborhoods. And not so much, you know, the housing seems like that was the second, the second vote-getter in the grand scheme of things. So for me, I would prefer to see either more of the multi-use, if you're going to go the route of bringing in residential, but to me, it seems like the citizens in the area are really saying that they want the restaurants and the, or the non-residential open space that's out there.
I'm curious, Mr. McVeigh, is that, is that a fair reading of these results?
Mayor, Council members, if we look at the quantitative numbers, restaurants got, I think, 1,500 votes, whereas the highest vote-getting residential category, I think, was 900 in total. So yes, you know, if you look at it quantitatively, there is a really big demand for restaurants in our downtown. But where I think, where I would, I guess, modify that a little bit, is that when we look at the qualitative data, we didn't necessarily get the sense that they want that restaurant district next door. They wanted access to it. Where I think the non-residential categories really kick in is that, you know, in our second neighborhood meeting, it was that, there was a fairly strong contingent that really just said, "We don't want houses here at all. We want revenue-generating uses." So in our minds, we, you know, when we start looking at that, that's talking about offices and that mixed-use type development, where it could be bringing revenues in through sales tax and other mechanisms to the city. But when we looked at the data, to us, we really still saw that the majority of people saw this as a primarily residential development.
And it's important to note, too, that the votes per category, there's about the same number, because they were allowed to vote on each one. It's just that the allocation within each category is skewed to certain ones. So it's not necessarily there's more in the entire category, it's just that people really liked restaurants and didn't vote as much for some of the other options.
I guess I just wanted to make sure that we're throwing caution to the wind, and we're not trying to tell the citizens what they're telling us that they want.
I appreciate it.
And so if it truly is, they want to fill it up with houses, go for it. But if it's, if it's the mixed use, if it's, you know, restaurants and housing, that's cool, too. But I don't want to put words in the citizen's mouth. I mean, we literally went out to the citizens and said, "We want your input. I don't want to make, I just want to make sure that we're not standing up here saying, 'Well, they want restaurants,' but we think they really meant they want housing."
Right. And that's where the qualitative data really comes into play. And we could, we, I don't know how many hundreds of responses we have in an Excel spreadsheet. We, we'll look through it again and make sure that our reading is not our biases kicking in and not what the citizens are actually saying. But I think you raise a good point. Decisions we make today for development at this site are going to affect the downtown area, hopefully, 50 to 100 years. So to some degree, it's with that long-term mindset that we should be thinking about this.
So obviously, restaurants was the number-one request.
After shades trees.
After shade trees, okay. So if we do take the approach that restaurants don't have to be just on this piece of property, they can be adjacent to this piece of property, or, you know, a block away on Main Street, or on University or Mesa Drive, opening it up to, so take restaurants off the table for just a moment, saying, "Well, we get it. We want us, we want an entertainment and restaurant district in downtown Mesa." I think I would be 100% behind that.
Mayor, can I suggest, I think we have to be careful with statistics, because you can make it sound whatever you want. But I think the concern about that comparison is, I don't believe, and don't correct me wrong, someone asked the question, "Do you want a restaurant over a residential?" They were asked in separate categories. So I think if you're drawing the associative comparison, I think there's a flaw in that, because they were not asked to compare one versus the other. They were separate questions. So I don't think you can draw any conclusion. You have to, only conclusion you draw is within the question itself, not from each category to the other. Is that fair? Okay, so I just caution, because I see how statistics are used, you have to be very careful to parse those out. So Mayor, what I would suggest, if council would be comfortable, let us draft up both the RFQ, because I think that's the first thing we want to do, is want to find out what qualified developers out there, so we could shortlist a number of developers that we think could be qualified to do, have the experience, the capacity to take on a development like this, to have that similar experience. And then from that RFQ, then we would, then create an RFP. What we could provide to the council for review before we go out is kind of a statement of vision that takes what we've tried to express today, share that with you, put that online, and make sure that that, before we send that out, that we're all kind of looking at the same statement of vision for this development. Would that work for the council? Well, it'll take us probably, you know, a couple weeks or so to put that out, and we can share that with the council. But I think the selection, the RFQ process, and RFQ process, trying to get this out to development community between now and the end of the year probably isn't real productive, but certainly, they're aware of it. But I think we could get everything in order and get the statements that RFQs develop, but probably wouldn't be sending those out until the first of the year.
Okay, thank you. I know not everyone got a chance to weigh in. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Glover's district, so I was going to defer to him before I said any questions.
We're not going to have one or the other. We're going to go with.
No, thank you, Jeff, and thank you for your team that went out and took contact with the community, because that's what I always tell developers when they come into the district, to meet with the neighborhood and get their support. I feel that this gives us a good outline that we can move forward, but I think we should provide enough flexibility so that developers can make this site very successful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glover, if I may, that's a really good point. When we were in the Developers Forum, we had one of our developers that actually asked a very well-thought-out question, is that this is a big site. It could take years to develop.
It could take years to develop. Three years from now, what the market and what they see happening could be different than what we're seeing today. So having a little bit of flexibility built into this could be very important for the success long-term.
I think my concern all along is, you have a couple of dynamics that are at play here. You have 20 acres at the old Brown and Brown site, you have 25 acres here, you have other smaller sites, you have the Country Club site. So the good news is, there's development interest in our downtown core. That's good news. For me, you know, development is a function, to get the capital to come in and invest in here, it's a function of risk and reward. And it's a matter of minimizing risk to the developing entity and maximizing their reward. And if you want some of these things, these restaurants or certain types of housing, if we're gonna get this specific, we have to de-risk those types of development and increase their reward for those types of development. Otherwise, we're not gonna get anything. And so saying that we're gonna do an RFP is one thing, but what that RFP actually looks like is a big deal, because you're not gonna be able to get what you want unless you write that RFP right. For me, we're the property owner here. I appreciate all the neighbors' input. I think it's important. I participated in that. And hearing what people want is really important, but we are the property owner, the city of Mesa. And by extension, all of our taxpayers and neighbors are the property owners of this. And so we need to do what's right by them. And I appreciated Nancy's comments about the legacy and the history and doing what's right by those people that used to live there and that got cleared out of there. But when we do this RFP, what are we asking for? Are we asking for people to come in and do developments? Are we coming in, are we asking for a developer to represent ours and by default our taxpayers' interest in being a master developer? Are we soliciting for projects? What is it that we're asking? Because an RFP is a, is a big, big, broad brush. And I think we need to be far more surgical about this than just saying, oh, we'll put together an RFP and we'll kick it your way. I wanna know, what are we asking for?
Right.
Even in qualifications, in the qualifications round, are we asking for a master developer who's gonna represent us in the development community?
So Mayor, Councilman Richardson, I think that's a great question. I think that's what I would like in the RFQ process, for the groups to come to us and ask, and tell us how they would approach it. And we may get, like you suggested, not the developer, but the master developer who's gonna bring in, you know, parse out the different parts of the residential or the commercial, or you may get somebody who just wants to take down five acres and develop that. So we, I think if we're looking at this as a long-term, as the property owner for the long-term, at some point, and the challenge of developing the master plan now is it changes all the time, but having a master plan developer who shares some of the risk and the, and as long as they're performing and bringing development on, I think that's kind of what we're looking for at the beginning, because to suggest there is a developer out there who knows exactly what they wanna do for 25 acres is a reach.
And I agree. I don't think a master plan is the right fit here. The right fit is, is when somebody proposes a project, making sure that it fits the vision.
Right.
You know, because we can write a plan, and you're right, it's gonna change in three years, market conditions change, you know, lending changes, lending rules, you know, all those kind of things. But I think each proposal needs to come, and we need somebody on our side and on the side of the taxpayer and the residents that is vetting each proposal as it comes. And if it's three acres and it fits the vision, boom, let's do it. If it's one acre and it fits the vision, let's do it. If it's the whole thing, well, that's another thing to consider.
So I think that's my imagine, is that we are looking for, the RFQ is looking for a qualified master developer, not the developer, but the person's gonna be our owner rep, if you would, in front of the development community to bring in all these different pieces, because it may be five or six different developers at the end of the day by the time this gets done, but you need someone who is overseeing all of that taking place.
And there's, I think the signals that we send the market through this are very important. Are there zoning requirements that we're willing, I mean, we're the owner, so are we gonna be going through all of those on behalf of whoever the developer is? Are we gonna, are we willing to incentivize in any way, do giblets? Are we willing to do, you know, again, if you wanna minimize risk for a bunch of restaurants or for any single-family home developers, we have to maximize their reward and minimize their risks, so.
So maybe if we put the RFQ together, why don't we put together, again, kind of more of a summary to the council of what we are looking for, and kinda walking through, here's what we're looking for, and here's what the city's kinda looking, how the city would participate, the options of how we participate to make this successful.
Right. And I don't think that RFQ, we're looking for the person that's gonna be the one that actually comes in here and makes the money.
Great.
It's our, it's our guy. We'll have to pay, you know, as a consultant, that's fine. I would rather pay somebody as a consultant that they're not in, online, to develop a bunch of the property. We need somebody to protect the rights and the interests of our taxpayers and our residents of the city.
Well, let's come back with that, not the RFQ, but that concept and bring that to the council for you to discuss. Maybe we'll come back with two or three options of what that might look like, and we can talk to the own community and look at agritopia, other areas that have been developed, and how was that done, where you had one master developer who brought in other, you know, home builders who build out different sections and commercial properties, or did you have one developer came to the whole thing?
Yeah, and I guess the phrase I'd use is, I think the person we're looking for is the keeper of the vision.
Okay.
Okay, we have the vision, it was extended to us. We need somebody on our side to be the keeper of that vision over a period of years to protect our, and to keep focused.
Let's work on, maybe bring back a couple of options on that. That'd be good.
Great. Lots of good impact, so we'll, we'll see. Look forward to getting that coming back to us, and we'll have, obviously, several good meetings on this in the future.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item three, acknowledge receipts of minutes of various boards and committees. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, that passes. Next item here, reports on meetings and conferences attended. I know there's been some conferences attended. Congratulations to Mr. Luna, is now the National Chair, or maybe, is that, is it okay to say that right now, of the...
You just said it.
Information Technology Committee.
National Chair of...
That's great, congratulations. That's an important position. Other announcements? Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh.
At the National League of Cities, Mesa was one of four cities recognized as being a member for NLC for 50 years, and so that's a great accomplishment for a large city.
That is, thank you. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
I had the pleasure, two weeks ago, feels like I've been gone forever, of attending the Shared Hope Juvenile Sex Trafficking Conference in Washington DC, and it was, it was quite devastating, listening to some of the stories of survivors and understanding that, you know, we have issues in our community as well as communities around us as well, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Luna.
Real quick, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge our explorers, if you wouldn't mind standing up, from Mesa Police Department. They're here touring Mesa City Council chambers and just trying to get a feel on city government. I gave them a tour of City Hall, so I wanna welcome and thank them, and I wanna thank their host, I'm sorry, their leader, which is Matthew Berkey. So thank you, Matthew, for bringing your students, and we appreciate him.
Yeah, just real quick, wanted to mention that it's been a while since we've been here, and I guess it was not last weekend or the weekend before that, was the Mesa Music Festival, and we had the Veterans Day Parade and all those kind of things, too, but it was, I attended the Mesa Music Festival. It's really neat to see that much activity going on in the downtown, and I read an article recently that talked about how cities should do festivals, not build more art centers, and, you know, big infrastructure project, but it's really around festivals that people are doing. And I think we've seen that happen more and more in Mesa. And what's been neat is our art center has learned how to leverage our facility by having festivals, and it's been a neat, so kudos to our art center, but also to the team that brought the Mesa Music Festival. It looked like it was quite a success.
Thank you, yes. I was at the keynote address from Chester Bennington from LinkedIn, or Lincoln Park, excuse me. That was a big deal. We were really on the map, so that, it's been fun to see that event grow. Other comments on meetings or conferences? Next is scheduled for the future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Quickly, Mayor, just remind everyone that Mary Main Street kicks off this Friday, November 25th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM in downtown Mesa, so the tree lighting, we invite everybody to come out for the tree lighting ceremony and music. You can go to marymainstreet.com for the details. Next week, a week from tomorrow, will be the Fiesta Sports Park grand opening, and that will be at 5:30 PM. And then we also remind the council that our next study session will be Thursday, December 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope everyone is as excited about Mary Main Street as I am. So what we're saying, ladies and gentlemen, is there's gonna be an ice rink in downtown Mesa for the entire month of December, so this is a big deal. Bring your family and your friends, and we've got a food truck court at Pioneer Park. The light rail will be free of charge. Mr. Kavanaugh, from between, what are the parameters of free light rail?
Between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday nights for the run of the show.
That's great. So we'll have a huge Christmas tree at McDonald's with vendors there, so hopefully everyone will bring your kids and wake up grandma and come to downtown Mesa to celebrate Mary Main Street throughout the month of December. The next item on our agenda is to adjourn. Is there a motion to do that? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.